Thank you.
All right, welcome everybody. I would like to call to order the town council meeting for May twentieth, twenty twenty four. Can all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, few announcements, uh, we have a proclamation declaring the week of May nineteenth to twenty fifth, two thousand twenty four is Emergency Medical Services Week. Um, I'm gonna read through that here briefly. Uh, to designate, uh, the official town of McCallis proclamation to designate the week of May nineteenth to twenty fifth as Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service. Whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden injury or illness. Whereas the Emergency Medical System Services consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. Whereas appropriate to recognize the value and confidence of Emergency Medical Services provided by designated the Emergency Medical Services Week now. Now therefore be resolved that the town of McCallis and town of McCallis do hereby proclaim the week of May nineteenth to twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, as Emergency Medical Services Week. The fiftieth anniversary of EMS Week theme is EMS Week, honoring our past, forging our future. I encourage the community to observe this week with their appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Uh, another proclamation we have, uh, this evening is also declaring the same week as National Public Works Week. Uh, again, the town of McCallis National Public Works Week proclamation. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of people of the town McCallis. Whereas in the public interest for citizens, civic leaders, and children, the town McCallis to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest in understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. Resolved, I Town Council President Jason Singer do hereby designate the week of May nineteenth to twenty fifth, two thousand twenty four, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make, protecting our national health, safety, and advance quality of life for all. Just a brief follow-up to all that. I mean, it's a testament to our town, to the service they provide our community. Um, both our public works, our first responders, um, that's really what makes McCallis special is the, the people we employ, uh, the people that provide those. It's, it's an important part. So we do thank them all of council on behalf of that. Are there any other announcements from anyone else on council this evening? Uh, pending none. Uh, at this time, we have a public comment for agenda items only. So items that are on the agenda, you're welcome to come up. You'll have five minutes to speak. Um, if you have an item not on the agenda, there'll be time at the end of the meeting for comments not related to the agenda. So if there is any public comments and agenda items, please go forward and state your name and address. Okay, pending none, we will get started into the, uh, depths of our meeting. Uh, minutes were submitted previously, uh, to all council members. We need a motion.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from May thirteenth, two thousand twenty four.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Uh, we'll carry into the reports of committees. At this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Casey to run the Administration and Finance Committee.
Okay, the check listings were in your packets. Are there any questions?
Yes, ma'am. Um, noticing there were two purchases of rock salt for a significant amount, and I know we had surplus. And I'm wondering if we are going to be continuing. I can't, did not, uh, honestly did not take the time to see how compared to last year's purchases, but I know we've not been using as much as usual the last two years, and is this an obligation to purchase this much salt?
Do you want to answer that? You want me to? Yes, the answer is yes.
There, there's minimum required when we have two contracts that we, uh, use, uh, one through Co-Stars in the state of Pennsylvania and one through the Cog. Um, we, uh, when we have the capacity to, to make the order, we do, uh, to hit the minimum. So, um, it wasn't that we needed it now, but we might as well take the purchase now when we have space to put it in there.
I'm curious if Cog will be renegotiating those minimums.
Uh, so the minimums, the numbers on the contract are percentage based on each municipality that submits their numbers. So our numbers we did submit this year, we made some adjustments based on that. And that's really up to each individual municipality, um, is the way that that's working out. Obviously, some people have made some bigger adjustments. We've been very lucky that, uh, ours was in a good number, minimum percentage that we haven't had to store or pay them to store.
Right, that's why I want to avoid us paying to store.
Yes, and I want to add to that because we just had our cog meeting and that came up. Many other municipalities have had a lot of issues with this. Um, and Morden Salt had come back and basically said, yeah, we'll store it, but for an increased cost, or we'll charge you for the next rounds more. Thankfully, our town manager and our finance director have appropriately planned us going forward. So we stand in a good position. Unfortunately, there's some others in Cog that do not stand in the same position we do. That was, yes, so.
We are just this much over the minimum this year. So that, that got us that much over.
Okay, everybody satisfied?
Any other questions on the checklist? Great.
And I'd like to make a motion to approve checklist number four dated April first, twenty twenty four, April thirtieth, twenty twenty four, totaling one million, one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, ninety-eight dollars and fifty-six cents is submitted to each member of council and posted on the bulletin board and town website. Thank you, Trish.
Uh, can we have a vote on this? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the dashboard report, uh, finance report for April thirtieth year to date. Um, you have that in your packet. The revenues and expenditures are performing consistent with prior year. Uh, Mr. Casey, I did receive that, uh, real estate transfer tax report this afternoon, and so there's an additional sixty thousand dollars in April. Um, this meeting is about a week ahead of our normal meeting, and so some of the county reports come in very last minute. So I wanted to just mention that. Um, the as I mentioned, revenues and expenditures are performing as expected. Ms. Clunin, your question on salt, last year we were at thirty-eight percent of budget. This year we're at fifty-two percent of budget. Um, so we are slightly higher for this time of year, but, um, I don't expect us to have many more expenditures in the snow and ice control until November. Um.
And also just point out that because we bought all of our salt in the last calendar year because we had to hit our minimums, we didn't really need to buy any salt in the first, the end of last year.
Yes, so, so we're in, we're in good shape. Um, the, most of the, if not all of the departments are within that thirty-three percent as expected for the fourth month of the year. Um, if anyone has any questions on the financial report, I'm happy to answer it. Yes, sir.
Ms. Grayhouse, I'm looking at the public works expenditures versus others compared to actual expenditures. Does that mean that we've spent a hundred percent of what we've allocated for April? Or have we spent a hundred percent of everything for the year?
For public works, when you're looking at the thirty-one point two percent, is that what you're referring to?
I'm looking at your dashboard right now, and it has all these different charts.
The first page.
Yes.
Okay.
And under public works expenditures versus others compared to actual expenditures.
No, sir. That box, what that, those two boxes, both the public safety expenditures and the public works expenditures, let you know how much we have spent year to date in those departments as a relation to the rest of the budget. So forty-five percent of our budget goes towards public safety, and currently twenty-seven percent of our budget goes towards public works.
So for the month of April, we've spent a hundred per, we spent a hundred percent of our expenditures.
No, sir.
Yeah, no, that's just.
This is just showing that it calculates out. And the hundred percent is showing that we spent seventy-three percent on other departments. It's not in a reference to what we've spent in April. Um, governments, if you look at the chart below, the month-to-month shows you that governments do not spend according, we don't spend on average a million dollars every month. Sometimes it's nine hundred thousand, sometimes it's a million four, depending on what's happening that month. And so it's a very cycled. And we've had this conversation this morning, Mr. Casey, revenue is basically based on a deadline. So we received quite a bit of revenue in May because of business privilege tax deadline and quite a bit of revenue in August because of property tax deadlines. So we can't budget strategically month-to-month. We can budget year-to-year, and that's the preferential way to look at that. I'm just showing in those two boxes what percentage of expenditures have been paid towards those functions.
And that was a request of previous councils, if I recall. They want to know exactly how much our public safety and how much our public work is of the overall budget.
Those are your two main functions of government, um, when it comes to public safety and public works. And so they're a good referent, a reference as to where we're at. Um, spending wise, you're gonna see that twenty-seven percent for public works go down to more like twenty-four percent as we go further into the year, and that salt number gets spread out over the rest of the months. That forty-five percent will jump slightly in October because that's when we pay the pension benefit for the police from the state. So there are things that tick up and down that percentage, and I'm happy to answer those questions as things as they move around. But no, that is not showing we've spent a hundred percent of April's budget. It's just showing how we've spent related to the functions overall in the general fund.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Gray.
Thank you, guys.
Communications report.
Uh, there was not communications reported in your packets, uh, due to the short, uh, month and some other um, things that went on last week. So, uh, we will get one to you by the end of the month.
Thank you. Junior council members report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Carson, Union.
So first, uh, the North Allegheny Rowing Team, which I'm a part of, uh, we made nationals. Uh, so we're going to nationals this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. It's in New Jersey. And, uh, my boat is going along with the girls varsity quad as well. Uh, so we're very excited about that. Um, North Allegheny High School students finished their AP exam with their AP exam week. It was a two-week, uh, very rigorous process. Uh, we're very proud of everyone. Um, and then this Wednesday, North Allegheny seniors will participate in the district's annual walk back in time day, where seniors return to their elementary schools and visit their former teachers.
And then moving on, um, North Allegheny Decca, as I mentioned before, it took forty students to the international Decca competition in Anaheim, California a few weeks ago, and five students placed at the international level.
Union, can you speak into the mic? I don't know if they can hear.
Oh, sorry. Um, prom was held this Saturday at the David L. Lawrence Convention Center with over six hundred attendees, and students also attended post-prom at Nash after the dance, and overall it was a very successful celebration. And then at the Pennsylvania Governor's Dem Competition, North Allegheny placed first out of eighty teams statewide. Um, I, I had a privilege of being part of this, uh, team, and we were able to receive a twenty-five hundred dollar scholarship for this placement as well. So I'm very grateful for that opportunity. And North Allegheny also held Project Water, which is a charity, uh, project that the entire school takes part of in a dodgeball tournament, and, uh, we had over four hundred attendees, and I'm sure we raised a great amount of money. It's for, um, supplying water resources in scarce areas. And I know Carson now wants to talk about his mock crash project.
Thank you.
Sharon.
Yeah. Can't even see it up here. So if we're on, now. How do I get rid of that? Back down here. Give us one more second. Multiple per, um, so. Sandy, it says somebody else is sharing. You know? But, yeah. What we can do is send this to council so they can see it, and, and you think it. And let's, well, let's see. I don't know. It's been a while since I used to make it. Do you mind?
Yeah, good.
Poke around. Okay, so you have the file open already?
It's right there. Yeah.
It's, it's, okay.
I would say click down the share.
Yeah, so, oh, yours looks a little different. That's interesting. Yeah, so this is just gonna show what's ever on your screen. So just so you know, like, we can, so.
Started. Sharing.
Did I do it?
So as you all know, um, I had my mock crash day at Nash. Um, this was really meant to spread awareness about the dangers of impaired driving. Um, this first picture is just a picture of the two cars. Um, the truck actually was hit by a, a train. Um, so, and here's another photo. Um, you can see one of our actresses, uh, Elizabeth Velez was there with, um, Officer Carl Yeney and, um, the stretcher was coming to help her out. Uh, Lifeflight was able to come. That was, that was pretty cool. Um, just, just another, um, angle of the crash. And finally, this is, uh, everyone who came. Um, but honestly, I could not have done this without, you know, the help of everyone for council, the help of the administration, and the help of all of our first responders. So thank you very much for everything. I appreciate it. So, thank you.
Well done.
Thank you.
Very well done to the boys.
Does anyone have any questions?
Probably seniors saw the presentation at the beginning.
So probably around eight hundred. Yeah, that's as big as the class, and there were eight, some AP testing going on, and so I'd assume that some stayed home for it, uh, or just, you know, occasional senioritis. Uh, so, uh, yeah, about eight hundred, I would say.
And how long has it been since we've had one of these?
Uh, we have not had one since before COVID. So I guess twenty nineteen was the last one. Yes, hopefully. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent job. Thank you. Thank you, Carson.
Thank you, Yuki.
No, right, because he put the apps there on.
Yeah, all right. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, liaison reports. Uh, McCandless Industrial Development Authority.
So that's a mouthful.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, uh, there's no meeting of, uh, M I D A this past month.
I think I'm gonna start calling it that. Okay, Mr. Singer, North Hills Council Governments.
We had a meeting last Thursday. Minutes will be available. I'll make a full report next month. Salt was one of the discussions, though I can't tell you that much. Our, and oh, I forgot, our chief, uh, Hawk was elected to be the police representative uh, for the cog. He, uh, unfortunately was not attending the meeting. They unanimously voted him in. I didn't want to share that. That was good news.
Okay, any, any public comment on administrative or finance committee items? Okay, I'll turn it over to Mr. Arlo.
Yeah, Planning and Zoning Committee, uh, unfortunately I was unable to attend the, the meeting, uh, earlier this month. So I'm sure RJ can still listen.
Okay, so we have three things that were on the Planning Commission agenda this past month. Um, the first. How's this? Can we, we're, you're okay? Okay.
Yeah, can't hear it.
Now? Yes, we good?
I mean, we can hear you, but I don't love to hear you.
Give me a thumbs up if we're okay. Okay, no, thumbs down. All right, all right. How's, how's this? This is, okay, I'm just gonna get really friendly with this mic.
We're good.
Bye, Paul.
You're good.
Okay. I'm gonna try to thread this needle. Sorry, everybody in advance. So we had, um, three items on the Planning Commission agenda. The first one was another conditional use application. You remember, we just had one of those hearings, um, for the first time in quite some time at, uh, I believe it was our second meeting in April. Yes. Um, this one is also in the warehouse and distribution use category. It is an actual distribution use, although it's probably not nearly as large as you're thinking. When you hear warehouse and distribution, it's a pretty small operation. The name is Legacy Life. They do medical testing, equipment, reagents, materials, things like that, um, that they distribute to labs in the area. I believe the equipment is manufactured, I want to say, in Denver. Um, they are looking long-term at potentially opening an, an actual processing lab in this area. And in that case, you know, shipping out different tests and things like that would just have been allowed as part of the laboratory use. Um, but because they are only looking at doing the distribution wing of the business right now, they need to come in as a conditional use under our zoning code. So, um, they are looking at the second floor of nine thousand Perry Highway, which is sort of just a general office commercial building. Um, there already are medical offices on the first floor, or excuse me, on the third floor. The first floor is vacant, but you know, they have some interest in expanding there again for potentially the lab facilities long-term. Um, looking at just a couple trucks that would ship out daily. So the Planning Commission, you know, kind of discussed the different aspects of that. Um, and had just a couple recommendations, you know, for conditions that you all could potentially put on your approval when they do come through to the council level. Um, one being they, there needed to be some tweaks to the loading space that they have on the site plan. Um, it was just a little small for what our requirements are, so they're going to update that. Um, they, the Planning Commission was also a little bit concerned about this use potentially getting any larger without further, you know, information, knowledge, whatever, because when you approve a conditional use or, you know, for example, the zoning hearing board of variance, kind of these different special zoning approvals, they typically run with the property, not just with the exact, um, parameters of, of what they're showing you unless you make that an actual condition. So that's something that maybe we can talk about a little more when we get to that public hearing and thoughts on how that could work, but that was, um, one of their recommendations. And they also suggested limiting shipping hours to seven AM to seven PM. That works just fine with the business. They typically don't ship out any later than whatever FedEx's um, last shipment of the day is anyway, so they'd probably be done pretty comfortably before then. Um, so the applicant was comfortable with all of those recommendations. The Planning Commission actually did not need a whole two meetings, even though they, you know, had the opportunity for two meetings. So they already took their vote, um, but we will not be having the public hearing on this one until June twenty-fourth because we had scheduled that to allow them up to two meetings to review. Um, does anyone have any questions on that one?
Sure, and I know this isn't part of the planning process, but did they share things like how many people they're going to be employing? And that sort of thing, like, what's this bringing to our town while we're looking at the.
I would have to double-check the, the site plan because they did have a parking plan. Um, the site was actually a little bit overparked for what our requirements are. I believe that it's done on a square footage basis for this particular use. I would have to double-check. Um, but I think that they actually did talk a bit about the employees, and there would only be a few.
I, I, I would love to see more.
Yeah.
I would love to see more people employed in the, you know, so, so I see these new businesses coming in. I wanna, you know, I want to make sure we remain like a positive force to bring, keep bringing them in.
Sure, yeah, it's, I mean, this is like a really small operation for what you term as distribution, but, um, they'll, they'll be at the, you know, the public hearing next month, so that would be a great question for them at that time.
And what, what's the nature of the business? It's, they're, they're putting medical test kits together?
More or less. I mean, it's different materials. You know, I, I don't think that it's just like one type of lab test or anything, like, you know, maybe the, um, the fluid that's like the carrier for, for the test or the swab or something like that. Like, there are different types of specialized equipment that they distribute in the area. Yeah. Okay, moving on. Um, this one is, is a fairly brief explanation because we have seen this plan before, although I don't know that everybody here has seen it. It's been a little while since they did, um, the withdrawal of it. Uh, but basically, there is a fairly large property on Willoughby, um, has frontage in the rear on Harmony as well. And, uh, the owner just has a little more land than he would like to be taking care of. So he came in back in twenty twenty-two looking to subdivide off the back half of it, basically, and turn that into four new single-family lots. Um, at that time, there were some issues with figuring out how they were gonna connect to the sanitary sewer. Some questions about right-of-way, you know, the, the neighborhood. Um, I think is a little older, so lot lines are in peculiar places, things like that. Um, so they had been going through the review process for a while back then and chose to withdraw it rather than have to get a denial just because they hadn't quite been able to wrap that up at that time. Took a step back, you know, did, did the due diligence, um, and they came back through this month, uh, with, with a submission, same deal, four lots, uh, out of the back of the property. Um, but they had the sewer worked out this time. So there were just a couple formatting comments, you know, minor, like, provide us a little more detail on this, you know, pipe or something like that. Um, but all very basic stuff that can easily be figured out as conditions of approval. Um, Gateway was comfortable with it moving forward at this time, and we can, you know, clean up those couple items as, as an administrative review, um, which is pretty typical for, for developments like this when all the material issues are worked out. So, um, this one is on your agenda tonight, uh, for approval, but happy to take any questions now.
Question, I think, I wasn't sure if it was on all four of them, but there was, um, looked like an on-lot stormwater management.
Yes.
That, that, because they're not going to be able to take advantage of any, you know, municipal stormwater management, or is this an, is an added layer of stormwater?
So it's, um, when four lots is like a pretty typical threshold, and it is what we have in our code as well, um, a couple of things that actually under the old code, we're still at the four lot threshold, where sort of the full land development and subdivision, um, you know, development requirements kick in once you've, you're creating more than four new lots. Um, so, you know, I guess the alternative to that would be something like a stormwater retention pond, but that's kind of just a bit large, you know, for, for a, a development of that size. So, um, they each will be required to maintain their own on-lot stormwater system. Um, if they had been making five new lots, then, you know, that's when the full code would kick in.
And just to add to that, when I looked at that two years ago, we questioned, and I know Gateway also picked up on it, their driveways. So they went back and redesigned and added for the driveway water as well into those on-lot.
Yes, yeah, they don't know exactly what the envelopes will be for the, the houses yet, because they're all gonna be custom, you know, he's, he's gonna market, do the site work, and then market each of these lots to, you know, whoever.
And you're speaking of driveways too. I mean, and that's kind of a, a hill.
Steep.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I remember that was the thing.
And they were planning, took a close look at the driveways.
Yes, yeah, that was, again, on the, um, withdrawn application, they were kind of trying to still figure out, you know, the, the entry grade, basically, the road. Um, but they were able to resolve that at this time.
Be afraid of, of blind left coming out of any of those houses.
Right, right. They, they, what they have now is compliant, um, with what our design and grading requirements are. Um, I don't believe that those were the, you know, outstanding items, so that they had to figure out. Um.
I will pose the question because I didn't see it sideways. I know that's a big thing.
So this actually, it, it's, it's part of that four lot, um, actually.
Uh, it named a fee and loo, is what I saw.
For the recreation.
For the recreation, they have a fee and loo because, yeah. I'm happy to go back and double-check that because, to be honest, I hadn't thought about it, um, until this moment. However, it was not a comment on the letter, which means one of two things. Either they're exempt because they are minor plan sized, which is again that for new lot creation. Um, yeah, or they have a sidewalk on the plan, but I don't believe they do, so I won't say they fall, they fall under the exemption.
Yeah. Oh, I didn't get anywhere here. Hi. Uh, thank you.
So remember, there was, um, the county had a comment on the sidewalks on this. They were shown as four feet, not five feet. So they do have sidewalks shown on the plans.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I can, um, show you the plan after if you want. Yeah, but they are on there.
No, that's it. Thank you.
Yeah.
I appreciate that, because I do remember seeing that on the county letter now, but yeah, just for once sidewalks didn't come up in that development review, so they were not top of mind for me.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
So the, the lots go behind the property?
Um, they, yeah, they'll front on Harmony Drive, though. So.
Okay.
Yeah, so essentially, you know, they'll, they'll just start to point each side of each street. Um, there was actually back in the, the withdrawn application. each side of each street. Um, there was actually back in the, the withdrawn application, there were some questions about, you know, is the road wide enough? Do they have to do anything to the right of way? They have that all figured out as well. I believe they actually met with Public Works um in the intervening time after they had submitted this application and got all that cleared up. All right.
What watershed is that since the end?
I would have to look that up. Definitely don't know that.
Are there any issues in that area? That you're aware of?
Uh, no, Public Works retrofitted some of the stormwater in Trolley Court. That probably flows to the Trolley Port, Port area, so not, nothing that I know of right now.
That's Wal Park.
It'll eventually end up down Wal Park, but that's, that's the higher end of that watershed. Um, the town has done retrofits up that high already, so.
And also, uh, uh, our stormwater ordinance will come into play on why there's lots that they have to hold the water on.
Yeah.
On the property.
What is that, Brian? Sixty percent of, or seventy percent of?
Um, I don't know if it came in under the old.
This would be under the new.
It'd be under the new one. Um, I don't know the percentage for Lowers Run. When we talk about the sixty five percent, that's for Pine Creek. Yeah, so it might be a different number, but it's still under a hundred percent. So we're still putting anyone that's doing, we're putting less water into the uh stream that was previously. Pre-existing conditions.
Okay, good with this one? Ready to, all right. So, last thing on the agenda was um something that we had talked about at our prior meeting when we sent this down to the planning commission, which is the tattoo and piercing fertilizer zoning ordinance amendment. Um, had some good discussion with the planning commission. They did ultimately decide that they wanted to kind of chew on it for another month, which is reasonable. I expected that, you know, to be the case. We gave them a um you know, the two months um timeframe that we typically do before we schedule the public hearing. Um, some questions from one of our commissioners about, she was looking at state standards for these types of businesses and um expressed some concern about removing the additional two hundred and fifty foot setback um from this use to new facilities that would, you know, minors would be using basically, so daycare. Um, schools, things like that. With her observation being you're not allowed to get a tattoo or a piercing without explicit parental approval um when you're under eighteen. So she, you know, had thrown out there that, that she felt that that was still a good thing to keep in. Um, there were a couple commissioners that, you know, asked questions about if we wanted to add it to all of the mixed use districts. Um, you know, when we had a discussion here, that didn't seem to be a point of concern. Um, which I conveyed, but you know, these, these are the things that they're talking about at the planning commission right now. They had no issues with adding it as a permitted use to the MU district, which is the one in question um for the applicants that, you know, had, had made this request. Um, to have it added as a permitted use in these districts in general. Um, one thing that I did want to just mention, because it's come up a couple times when we've done ordinance amendment reviews, that the planning commission has basically asked, well, what came out of the public comment on this? Um, and, you know, the, the answer is procedurally, what we're supposed to do legally speaking is before we hold the public hearing at town council, we're supposed to give the planning commission a minimum number of days to talk about it at their meetings. I believe it's thirty, um, which is, you know, why we, we bake in the two meetings typically. Um, so, you know, they're, they're interested in what's occurring at the public hearing. However, legally, we have to send it to them before we even get to this stage. So I'm not necessarily sure how to, you know, satisfy that ask other than to continue to say at meetings, it will be discussed at the planning commission, so people are aware. Um, but just wanted to make everyone aware that that was a point of discussion that's come up a few times now.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any questions? All right, thank you.
Um, still with you, Doug.
Yeah, uh, yeah, planning commission, uh, thanks RJ, um. I, I'm uh out of town for the planning commission meeting, but uh information's in your pocket.
I will um take over the zoning hearing board and the most recently approved minutes are in your packet. Uh, Mr. Casey was there in my place on March twenty seventh, and so it should be directed to him. Uh, and there will be a zoning hearing board meeting this Wednesday, May twenty second.
Got other questions for Trish? Uh, at this time, are there any public comments on planning and zoning committee items? Okay, then at this point, we'll turn over the meeting to Mr. George.
Report of the Recreation Committee. We'll start with Finance Development and Promotional Committee for the Heritage and Cultural Center, Mr. Hart.
There was a meeting of the Heritage and Cultural Center. Um, the um uh executive director has uh has moved on, so uh vacancy at that position. Um, the board is moving forward with plans on a gala uh in November. Can, everybody can attend that. Um, and there is um several um uh speakers and they're being listed on the revolving board in the front of the Heritage Center. Um, in advance of the meetings. Uh, there has been some concern about registering for those. Um, so we're trying to work the bugs out of that.
Thank you, Mr. Hart.
May, see, I can see the idea of the Antiques Roadshow as a fundraiser would be fabulous if you could fund a couple of people who know antiques. I think a lot of people would employ that for campaigning.
Yeah, there's a lot of.
Awesome. Next up, Activities Advisory Ad Hoc Committee, misclued it.
And there was no meeting.
Is there any public comment on Recreation Committee items? There were none. Town Manager's report, Mr. O'Malley.
I apologize, I was not able to complete the town manager's report with the short week or a short month here, um, but I will complete it by the end of the month and share it with council.
Uh, the engineer's report was also in your packet. If there's any questions, uh, Brian or Kelly are available for anything in that. Any questions? Okay, uh, the town attorney's report.
Uh, first and foremost, as always, thank you for having me in uh Mr. Farrell's absence. You have a report in your packet, and if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them in the executive session.
Thank you very much. Uh, there is no old business uh that will carry us to new business. Uh, as you see here, what RJ teed up was the Bowler Plan uh subdivision submitted. Um, is there, in order to even have further discussion, we need to see if there is a motion on the table for this.
I'll, I'll make a motion too.
Well, go ahead. If you want to go ahead and read that?
Yeah, motion to approve the preliminary slash final subdivision slash land development application for the Bowler plan submitted by Brian Bowler located in ninety two twenty Willoughby Road contingent upon all items being addressed as identified in the town engineer's review letter dated May fourteen twenty twenty four and any other subsequently issued review letters.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Is there any further discussion on this? I think it's pretty cut and dry. I think we've heard it. I think our engineers, our planning department has really gone through this. Um, I'm satisfied with it.
Double check the plan.
Uh, if there's no further discussion, I'll call for about all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Um, the next item on here uh is not one I want to talk about. Um, but unfortunately, it's something we have to deal with. Um, our town manager, Brian O'Malley, is uh moving on. Um, he has done wonders for us in the town uh in his short period here. Uh, been a great addition, will be thoroughly missed by council, by administration, uh, by residents of the town, so. Appreciate the, everything you've done for us. Uh, we wish you good luck in your uh future. And um unfortunately, uh, we're at the moment where we have to have a motion to accept that resignation. Uh, if somebody's willing to make that motion.
I'll make the motion to accept the resignation of Town Manager Brian O'Malley effective June fourteenth, two thousand twenty four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any further discussion if anybody else?
Right, thank you for everything that you've done. You've, you, you've done everything that we could have asked for as far as you know, public monies and your relationship with those people in Harrisburg. Thank you.
I'll have more to say since I still have another meeting and I'm still in here for a month and, and wanted to do whatever I can to help in the transition period done. But uh, you know, I can't say enough in a short time about how wonderful this community is, how wonderful this council is, how wonderful the staff, uh, Public Works, um, police, everybody uh in this community. I, you know, when I got hired, I, I gave a speech that talked about how important the people were here and, and what makes it so special and uh, that continues today and uh, you know, kind of a I'm, I'm sad to be leaving because I absolutely love it here, um, but uh, you know, the, the choice that I had to make was kind of where I was um for, for, for me and my family, so. Um, I'll say more at the next meeting, but thank you. Just wanted to add a little spice there.
There's been a motion, a second. Uh, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
May.
I'm not doing a roll call vote. The ayes have it.
To be one.
Uh, thank you. Motion carries. Uh, at this time, uh, any non-agenda comments, please come forward, state your name and address. Uh, you have up to five minutes.
I'll turn it.
Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Lauren Crew. This is my husband Ken. Our residence is fourteen oh nine Regency Drive. Um, we're here with other members of our plan to discuss the issues that we're experiencing with the continued deterioration of Little Pine Creek, mainly in our backyards, mainly our property that is slowly eroding, causing distress. Uh, some of the neighbors in our plan have lost upwards of twenty feet of their backyard. We realize that with the addition of McCandless Crossings um flood maps got redone. A lot of us got notices from our mortgage company that said, you're now in a flood plain. You need to carry mortgage insurance for flooding. Um, for those of us that were in that position, it's caused a financial hardship. Um. We've got an issue that is not fixing itself. So our choice is to bring it to your attention so that remediation in some way can be done. Um, I, we saw that the retention pond that was put in in front of Lower's College does something. Does it stop the amount of rainwater and the amount of water that's pushing through that small area? I don't believe so. And a lot of the people that are here this evening are as just as concerned as we are. We've been here since two thousand and six. When we first moved in, you could put an eight foot board. I could go from our yard, my daughters could go across the creek and play with the neighbors across the, on the other side. It's not twenty five feet. And it's not getting any better. There are portions of trees, and I brought pictures that we've taken, that I can give you. Um, there are trees that whose roots are literally exposed, and along that creek is a power line. There's a whole set of lines that run up that creek. And if you'll see in some of those pictures, there actually is a power line pole that is starting to tilt. Our purpose today again is to start the conversation. I don't expect resolution today. But the discussion needs to be had. We were told by some of the neighbors that are older residents than us that there at one point was a plan put in place to do some type of remediation, dredging, shoring up many, many years ago, and that kind of just went nothing ever got done. There's a lot of tax dollars this township gets from McCandless Crossings and the buildings that are there. And I think that we all feel that it's time to put some of that back, the residents that are actually paying the taxes also, that enjoy the neighborhood, that like where they live. So.
I guess.
Could you just consider? About more neighbors that said they had plans, um, they're not here.
And we're not, I mean, we spearheaded it because we've just watched it over the years and it gets worse and worse.
We have trees that are ready to fall. Whose responsibility is it? We don't even know. You know, there's kids playing. They're playing. You know, something tragically on the kids, some of those walls.
There was a bridge work done, done on Brittany. And when they did that bridge work, they shored up that section leading away from it. Okay, and all we're asking is that someone get involved. I don't know, is it the Army Corps of Engineers that comes in and does that? Who's in charge of it? But I mean, we're going to be here each month. We're going to continue, not going to stop. And either the people behind me that are all affected by it, you can see the heads nodding. I mean, my husband and I literally put a letter together, walked the neighborhood, and met the people and took pictures. And not all of them can use it. So, so I'll leave it open to the people.
How many homes does that represent?
Our neighborhood is Remington Regency, the backside of Regency on Brittany, going back down into Ross. On the head side of it, it would be portions of Winchester.
Bell Moro.
Bell Moro, yes.
Patricia.
Patricia, yeah, Patricia also, yes.
So you, just so you understand how this works.
Our timing.
Public comment is a five minutes. It's typically not a dialogue. We listen to the concerns. I'm more than willing to come over and talk to you here at the end of the meeting. I'll gain your information. We could have more. But just to continue our meeting along, you know, we typically don't have a giant discussion, so we, we thank you for your comments very much.
Thank you.
Ford, state your name and address, please.
I'm Taylor. I'm on Remington Drive eighty ten. So interestingly enough, my house is the first house that doesn't require flood insurance. But this year, and the reason I came today is because that all changed with the two major storms we had recently. Um, probably some of these tornado warnings and surges or whatever you want to call them. I have tons of pictures. I'm happy to email them. I have them digitally. But the reason I wanted to speak up tonight specifically because I did call Town and McCandless and ask them, who's responsible for taking all of this trash out of the creek that has landed in front of my property from these storms and all these years? Because I just moved in in twenty twenty. And they advised me that you could just take an imaginary line down the middle of the creek, and whoever's on the right takes care of what's on the right, and whoever's on the left takes care of what's on the left. But the problem is the people that live on the other side of the creek, their bank is so much higher, they can't see it. So it's not an eyesore with tires and trees and branches and flooding that is now like literally crossing like a beaver to appear out of nowhere. So I um, I definitely would love to get you those photos because my seventy three year old father this evening got into the creek to cut up a tarp that has been blocking the flow. And on my property, which is literally again, not in the flood zone. But this tarp is preventing the flow of the water for all of us at the creek. So I just find that very disturbing and just inappropriate and obviously ridiculous that my father had to do that, not only just for like the aesthetically pleasing nature, but also for the animals and the kids in the neighborhood, you know, go there and fish after school and would like to have some fun in life and get them off their pads, you know, and their tablets and whatever else, so they can get outside and see this beautiful sunny day. So anyways, for what it's worth, I just have a different thing. I'm not financially impacted, I guess, yet. But as the creek deteriorates, and something else that's important is although I don't have children of my own, I have a black lab who I love and adore, and I spent all the money to put in an electric fence in my yard. The damage of this recent impact this year of the storms has taken out five feet of land where the electric fence was. So legitimately, the reason my dog got into the creek initially was to take like land basically and try to put the fence back up so that my dog, God forbid, doesn't get out of my yard, because we'd have a horrible conversation on our hands tonight if that happened. So anyways, that's just something I thought would be important to share on top of what everyone else is sharing, because obviously eventually it is going to be financially impacting me as well, so. And that's eighty ten, and then towards the um other elementary school, so Peebles is on my left, and then the road changes, you know, from Remington to um Inerdale, I believe. So I'm on Remington, and then there's two street two stop signs up, then the road changes to a different school district, which, again, I don't have children, so I don't remember exactly what that means to you all, but you all know. Because you're.
Eighty ten.
I'm eighty ten. Yeah, so just a cute little Cape Cod red brick.
And I'll come give you my email address so we can get those.
Okay, great, yep. Okay, great, yep, and back in the day, I have photos, and then also obviously from today, so anyways, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your comments, thank you. Please come forward, state your name and address, oh, sorry.
My name is Johnny Andre, I live at eight oh nine seven Brittany Place. Uh, we listened at length about all the salt that's being bought, but it needs to be spread. And we witnessed within the last ten minutes, the sad news of Brian leaving. I would highly suggest you motivate to fill that position because. That salt that you acquire and already have on the property has to be spread by trucks. And last year, we had some embarrassing situations happening where we couldn't get the number of trucks that were allocated. That sit in that lot down there to be loaded because they were so old and their new water did not come through in a timely fashion. Think about the job of what Brian has been doing. And the type of work that needs to be done as he changed the seasons. I thank you for your thoughts.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Please, if you have comments, name and address.
My name's Tom Tom Segren, live at eighty-one seventy Remington Drive, we've lived here forty years. Um, I live right on the creek there, uh, on the high side where the neighbor crossed the creek, actually, it gets more flooding. But uh, I've noticed over, over the last ten years. The erosion is getting worse and worse coming up toward our side, his, their side is definitely. I can see the sanitation lines running along the creek venture uh from the sanitation plant. More my house is, um, I'm near the bridge there, where the sanitation starts, so it's two houses down from there. So. Somebody's gonna have to go and definitely evaluate the situation there to make sure that. Those lines don't get hit by something, and uh, then you, we're gonna ha- eh eh end up having. More trouble down the creek itself. Uh, so uh, the, just uh, just taking consideration. And there's a lot of older people in that neighborhood too, so. And uh, that's it for me, so.
Thank you, thank you for your comments, thank you. Sir, please, name and address.
Richard Remi, uh, eight thousand Remington Drive. Uh, wife and I have lived there for, since nineteen sixty-eight. So we seen what the creek was when we moved in, before all the housing went in, all the runoff come down. It was, you could step across it, it was barely a small stream, and now. When it rains, it's a raging river, you don't want to fall in there because you might knock it out. Our next door neighbor, I, you can take a look at this, I don't know what it was. But it looked like a tuber from a trailer truck was wrapped around that pole. And it got washed on with that last rain. Used to be in somebody's yard, and now it's in the creek. That two houses down from there, there was a uh, manhole that was in someone's yard. And all you could see was the lid, and now the whole thing is exposed, it's all gone, it's sitting right in the creek. So both sides of the creek are being washed away, and uh, nobody seems to. Pay any attention to it. About all I have.
Thank you for being, sir. Anyone else, please, name and address.
Uh, my name's Jude Weisner, I'm at eighty-one ten Remington Drive. Yeah, we've lived there about thirty years, and I want to say. But first, surely after we moved in, a couple of years after, we had some soil backups into our basement. So we came, we talked to you guys, you guys put a sewage or a new sewer pipe for our yards. And a fence, like you took down some of our trees and stuff, so then. You were nice enough to put, we we brought the fencing, you guys put the fencing up on the back of the creek. And there was probably about five to six feet uh on the other side of that fence in our yards. Now, uh, there might be two feet, maybe one foot. And it seems like every time it rains now, you know, you never really noticed the creek getting high. When we first moved in, but now it seems to be getting high all the time. So I don't know if it needs to be dredged or cleaned out, or even made a little deeper, something. Because it's rising all the time, no matter, it seems like no matter what kind of storm we get. It it it's, the level is definitely a lot higher than it used to be. And, you know, I'm here with some of my other neighbors and, you know, we're concerned. And I know you guys, you know, we appreciate you took care of the job. Uh, all that, you know, that long ago when you put the new sewer line in, and we're hoping that you can help us out again. So we we appreciate you listening to us, hopefully, um, you can come check it out. And we can rectify the problem. And, you know, I sent an email about a couple of years, couple of years ago, I think it was something like John Berhalski or something. I don't know, is that name familiar to you guys? He he got back to me, and, you know, he he said that. You know, then, it's hard sometimes because we have all these property owners. And, you know, working together, and when if you guys come and look at it and maybe do some work, everyone has to agree to it. And I think that if that would happen, I think we would, you would get a lot of people agreeing. You guys to come and fix, all right, we appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Any other uh, public comments? Uh, then at that time, uh, we will adjourn to executive sessions as best personal matters.
They can make a motion to do that.
We can do that. Go ahead. So moved over here by Jack, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hart, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Motion carries, thank you, everybody.